All right, we're going to call the September 22nd, 5:15 emergency meeting to order. With that, we're going to skip over the invocations today and we will do the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody will rise, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is an emergency meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's 22nd day of September 2021. In attendance are Chairman Scott Carnahan, First Vice Chairman Ronald D. Kitchen Jr., Second Vice Chairman Ruthie Schlebal remotely, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Holly Davis remotely, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that, we'll turn to our Attorney Administrator, Mr. Oliver.
Yes, as you know, a week ago, you voted to take over emergency transport services, and we're going to give you an update, and the purpose of today's meeting is to extend the declaration of emergency under state law. We can only go seven days at a time, and so consequently, we have to do that. If we can pull up the slideshow, then... Okay, let's go to the first slide. We have an organizational chart here. In this organizational chart, it lists, I will say, we have, if you look on the left, we have 36 paramedics and 36 EMTs. We're pleased to report that we've had 77 applicants for paramedic. So the job is very much in demand, and we've had 87 applicants for the EMT. We're going to give preference to Nature Coast. Anybody coming over from Nature Coast obviously has to pass our background check and meet the qualifications of the position. We need to confirm their medical ability to practice under the state of Florida, and then they will be on one year's probation. But we've had some people from some other counties that have applied there. I know a member of you all or God called to on that.
I have, for sure.
Okay. Last evening, I would also note that I understand Sumter County decided to take theirs back, and they're going to be transitioning that from AMR. So this is the organizational chart. The first thing I want to mention to you and see if you have any contrary direction is, we've decided that the best point to transfer these employees, and I'm going to explain why, is 10/2 of 2021 at 8 o'clock in the morning. The reason is, is because this will make it so we can maintain their insurance through Nature Coast for the month of October. We've agreed to pay the premium, which is $16,000 roughly, and then they will come onto our insurance November 1st, so there will be uninterrupted coverage, and we still comply with the federal mandate, so we don't change our conditions for hiring employees and potentially open us up to a lawsuit because we did something different for different people. Next slide. With that, let me do this before we go to the next slide and the numbers. I'll ask Craig Stevens to give us an update from his perspective. We were at the Inverness with Commissioner Carnahan last night. We were at the Inverness City Council meeting. We will be at the Crystal River City Council meeting this coming Monday night to tell them how we're doing. So Craig, would you like to say a few words?
Commissioners, as you know, we've got a lot of work to do, and we've been doing that work. We've been working very closely with Nature Coast, their staff, Denise and her staff, Fleet and their staff. So it's been a very long day here and there. I think I've been awake for seven days. Currently, we have our temporary COPCN completed. Our next phase is to apply for our ALS license to the state, which we have an ALS license, but this ALS license is for transport. The billing company, we already have a contract that we've got back from them. It's gone through legal, and now it's purchasing for review. We plan to keep Nature Coast Billing Company moving into this so the transition is smooth and we don't lose any revenues. We're still working to identify the debt as far as on the leases. Scott sent those to me this afternoon, so we should be able to complete that very shortly. We do have the bank account that's set up for all of our revenues to come into, which was done by the clerk's office. We are currently evaluating all the MOUs. For example, we have an MOU with the City of Inverness and the City of Crystal River for the fire station usage for those units that are there. As Randy said, the paramedic and EMT job postings, we've had them out, and we've had an overwhelming response. I will note that only four full-time paramedic and EMTs from Nature Coast have not applied. We've started the process of purchase orders for those approved emergency purchases. Job descriptions are complete for all the support staff, and we're obviously waiting for Human Resources to get those posted on NeoGov. And then the vehicle registration changeovers, if everything goes smoothly with the leasing companies, our intention is to try to do that on September 30th if possible, so that is done and taken care of as we get into the weekend. We've noticed that we have to verify the stock of medical supplies and make sure that we have potential backup of medical supplies. We're still identifying our immediate purchasing needs, so that's why we obviously want to try to extend this just in case. And then, of course, we're identifying the assets with the clerk's office and Nature Coast EMS staff on Monday to make sure we account for those assets and nothing comes up missing. Are there any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions for Captain, Chief Stevens? Excuse me. Okay, thank you, Chief.
I would note that Nature Coast has indicated that they are going to keep the services of two or three people for part-time or to transition their stuff out, which may take a little bit of time because we obviously aren't taking any of their medical records and things like that, personnel records, because we will start afresh. Mr. Baxter is one of those that will be staying with Nature Coast. We also, to be a good neighbor, what we're going to let them do is to use some amount of space out there for a short period of time to facilitate that transition and them closing out their books. On the EMS fund, we're calling for ambulance fees of $9,946,454. Medicaid reimbursement, $98,000. I think it will be higher than that once we're eligible for some assistance that they weren't eligible for as a governmental entity. And then that's the subsidy transfer in from general fund, and then the transfers out. Total revenues are $12,987.22. Next slide. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Randy, can you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
The $98,000 for Medicaid reimbursement, it's a bit timely right now. Would we, our last meeting, we talked about this Medicaid direct payment system to the hospitals. Would the county, if the county is operating transport, would the county be eligible as well for direct payment from the federal government for Medicaid services?
We get a higher reimbursement rate. I can't answer whether we can use the same mechanism, the hospital works or not. I don't know.
I would suggest we look at it because I believe we can.
I know we can get a higher reimbursement rate because we're government than a nonprofit can.
I would suggest we look into it. Next slide. These are the expense sides. I would note that the lease payoffs are $933,707. That's a one-time expense. But one of the things we're working through with the lawyers is, we believe that the leases have, they finance certain things. We would note that their new ambulances have been sitting out there and haven't really been pressed into service at this particular point in time because they were waiting on some things. But there's a question as it relates to whether there's a release needed from the line of credit vendor, and if there is, we may wind up going out to other entities and leaving those ambulances behind and just borrowing those because we, there's a difference of opinion on that, but hopefully, the attorneys will work that out.
Mr. Oliver, real quick, if we do that, that's fine. What is the lead time on getting new ambulances?
Oh, it's about a year for a brand-new box.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, we would have to see about borrowing it from other governmental entities.
Okay.
Hopefully, that will not be necessary, and it will work its way out.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. This is the CAD funding. Commissioner Carnahan and I had a conversation with Motorola today. We got that issue worked out, and this is how we're proposing that be funded. That is on the agenda for Tuesday to approve that contract, and Motorola's in agreement. So with that, we're here to answer any questions. As I say, this is a moving target. There are a lot of steps to be taken care of. The main thing we want to do is to make sure that we're able to provide the service in a timely and responsive manner for the citizens that they expect.
Commissioner Davis or Schlebal, do you have any questions?
Yes. Doug, my hand is up, so if, you know, to not make it confusing. You can notice that.
Well, during the presentation, because I couldn't see you, so now I can't.
Okay, okay. So Randy, I was wondering, on the slide, I don't know, page four, the ambulance fees, does that, is that 100% billable and, you know, what you've invoiced, but not 100% of what you're going to get in?
No, we're projecting on what we're going to get. What they've done in the past, which I think is unnecessary for government, they do what's called a gross-up, and the gross-up is what the standard book rate is, and then if they bill the insurance company half that amount, then they do an adjustment down, because you'll notice that Nature Coast billed 20, a couple of million dollars, and then they adjusted the billings down. I think Commissioner Kennard probably knows that game better than anybody around.
That's the difference.
But the insurance companies have a set rates that they approve, and so we've adjusted that out as well as the allowance for doubtful accounts, figuring that we know we aren't going to collect all of it.
So this is a percentage of what you would, what the county would be invoicing, is what you're saying?
Absolutely. It's in the 60s.
Does this include the inter-facility fees?
At this point, we have not dealt with inter-facility fees yet. That will be additional revenue. We need to get the kinks worked out of the 911 or the emergency transport first. There is money to be made in the facility transports because they're guaranteed payments, but we don't want to overextend ourselves till we got this working the way that it should be.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, any questions?
No, Chair, I think I'm good.
Thank you. Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes, sir. First of all, great job, everybody. I've heard our staff described as rock stars during this process, the way everybody's going through and dealing with it. My question is, the main point of the meeting tonight is to continue the declaration of general emergency. So do we need to continue to do that, or is this done, like, do you think it's going to take more than seven days? And if so, can we do what we did the other 64 times where we always do this, or do we have to have a special meeting every time for that?
We'll bring it back at the next Tuesday regular meeting.
There's been a change to the law at the state level, and I think it stemmed from the way that some entities were working within the pandemic. So now, the way the law reads is, it is, the initial declaration is, will expire after seven days unless you meet and a majority of you votes to keep it continued. So I would say that we have from this Friday, from last Friday to this Friday would be one week, and then we're asking you to continue it for another seven days, which would get us through to the changeover date, which is next Friday. If something should happen where we need to come back, we would have to come back under the new law and convene a meeting like this and have a majority of you vote.
So this is probably the only meeting we're going to have to do to get us until the October 1st date?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, great. Well, Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready, I'd make a motion that we continue the declaration. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Clark, then I'll come back.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I've got a question about the CAD funding. We, if I recall, I thought that the way that we had left it was that the Sheriff's Office was going to pay a third, Fire was going to pay a third, and EMS was going to pay a third. And then at the last meeting, I had said that I felt like Sheriff's Office should still be paying a third, but now that we had Fire and EMS, that those two-thirds should come out of Fire, should come out of those Fire reserves. And I don't recall, I think it was Commissioner Kitchen said, well, that's fair is fair, that if we were going to charge a third to EMS when it was under Nature Coast, that EMS should pay a third, well, it's, you know, under Fire.
I do have that on the agenda for Tuesday.
Okay, because, you know, the way...
This is the way that those Fire reserves are going to be needed to cover these lease payouts that they've got to do, and that's why we came up with this methodology. But it's a third, a third, a third. It's just allocated slightly differently. But it's a third out of Fire, a third out of CIP General Fund, which is Sheriff, and then a third of it out of American Rescue Plan Act. But Nature Coast has an abundance of debt.
The, I'm concerned about us because this is new. This isn't, you know, this isn't something that the board has said, yeah, let's use these ARPA funds for this last $1 million. And if that's the direction the board wants to go, then I think we need to have that conversation and vote on it. But the direction we were going until today was that two-thirds was going to come out of that CARES Act money that went into Fire Reserve, and the other third would come out of the CIP General Fund Sheriff's part of it. So I think that's, obviously, I don't think that's something that we can vote on today, but I think that needs to be a topic of discussion for the entire board.
It's on Tuesday's agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
All right. Commissioner Schlebal?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I agree completely with Commissioner Kennard, and I would support what he is saying.
Well, again, it's on the agenda for Tuesday because that's what the board agreed to at the last meeting, so I made sure it was on the agenda to have that conversation. So with that, Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I thought you had said that you were going to put it on the next meeting, so I'm glad you did. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we continue the declaration of general emergency relating to emergency medical transport executed on September 17th, 2021.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kitchen, second by Commissioner Kennard.
And authorize the chairman to sign it. I'm sorry, that should have been on there.
Okay, and authorize the chairman to sign.
All right, we got a motion, we have a second. Now we'll open up the public. Does anybody in the public want to speak on the emergency declaration? Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm going to ruin your 15-minute meeting with three-minute public input that's afforded according to rules. My name is Jennifer Ray. I serve as General Counsel for Nature Coast Emergency Medical Services, and I just want to touch on a few things. Despite the fact that the contract was terminated at its last meeting without being an item scheduled on your agenda for voting, and the fact that the termination letter does not, in our opinion, comply with the terms of the contract in terms of notice, as those terms are required, the Nature Coast Board is committed to making this transition happen. They have established priorities to ensure a seamless and uninterrupted level of service to the citizens and residents of the county, given it is such a critical service. Their second priority beyond that is to ensure that their employees are taken care of, so that those employees who want a job with the county are afforded an opportunity to apply, and for those who will not have a position with the county because of the county's organizational structure or model, that we'll be working with them to assist them in any way possible to obtain employment elsewhere. Beyond that, there's a couple of things I do want to touch on. We have confirmed with the financing institutions and the leases on the ambulances, they are, the banks are not consenting to assignment of those leases, so the leases on the ambulances themselves will have to be paid off in order for those to have a clear title for us to transition. As of yesterday, that was an uncertainty. As of today, that is the consistent answer that we are getting, thus the payoff amounts identified in your budgets. We did seek to get those assigned, but the banks are not consenting to those assignments. One issue I do want to just note, and I had attempted to communicate with your counsel earlier today, but due to scheduling conflicts, we've not had that discussion. The contention is for a termination date of October 2nd at 8:00 a.m., and I just ask for consideration of whether or not that changeover on a Saturday is the best idea in terms of problem-solving or potential hiccups in the event of transition. If we do it on a Friday, we've confirmed that that does not disrupt the Nature Coast ability to continue with health insurance, but it is on a normal business day where if some issues do arise, there might be more resources available to problem-solve. It's just a proposal, food for thought. It's not intended to be sort of combative or disruptive. We're just trying to think through the practicalities of such transitions. And so with that in mind, there is ongoing discussion between staff and Nature Coast about what assets Nature Coast needs immediately versus what assets can be addressed or what the county is not intending to take. The quicker we can have those decisions, the better off, so we can prioritize where to assess our time. Our staff, like yours, is currently operating a 24/7 high-demand business while trying to deal with the urgency of these, so those decisions become important. So I just wanted to kind of represent Nature Coast's perspective.
And if you've got anything, feel free to do anything else you have, and I'll give you any time you want. I don't want to rush you there.
Nope. So we are working on that. It is our intention, we are working on sort of a transition agreement that probably has more blanks today, or less blanks today than it did on Monday, but more blanks than to finalize it. But the goal is to try to iron out all those details and have a written structured plan to document some of the moving targets that are occurring.
Okay.
So with that, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Anybody else? Once, twice? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public portion. Madam Attorney, would you like to address any of those? Any of that?
I don't think so. Jennifer and I were not able to touch base today because I was tied up all day, but we've been working great together. I think the Nature Coast Board had a great meeting. They were, everybody's really, really doing a good job working together, so I don't, yeah, there's a lot of questions, but I think we're working through them. So no, I don't have anything to add.
Good deal. Commissioners, any other questions?
Ruthie.
All, huh?
Ruthie.
Yes. Chair, I have a question for you. If you could just remind me, this is definitely going under Fire. We're not going to maybe look at having a public safety department? I can't remember how it was voted on last time.
This was voted to go underneath Fire, okay? And if we want to have that conversation at a later date, we can do that, but this was voted to go under Fire.
Okay, I just, that's, I just need a clarification. I couldn't remember. And the second part is for Randy. Did you give an update to the board about how much has been spent during this emergency order?
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I have that. The biggest expenditure that we have had to date are buying new monitors, and that was done on the recommendation of the medical director. To date, we will have spent about $1.5 million, okay? Includes med vaults and med coolers. Apparently, Nature Coast was using ice chests with ice in it, and that's not the preferred method to do it. The drugs last longer. Bought $22,000 worth of computers for the vehicles because their computers didn't work. It's the IT stuff. The big expense were the life packs, which those are for keeping track of somebody's pulse and how they're doing there. They're consistent with ours. We haven't done this yet, but we've got vehicle graphics, lockers, we've got bone drills, we've got some narcotics, medications. And then the other big expense that we've got is going to be ordering three ambulances, which will be about a 12-month process. We have not ordered those yet, but we will be ordering those, and that will bring back to the board.
If I might, I don't know, I think the question from the commissioner was how much money has been spent. I don't, I don't know that all of that money has been actually...
No, it hasn't been spent yet.
May I finish?
Yeah.
I think what we've done is we've signed either purchase orders or agreements. I don't think the money has actually left the county's possession yet for all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Chair, I had asked for us to be updated on that, and Randy said that he would be giving us that, what he spent during the emergency order, and I feel very strongly about this, so, you know, am I going to get what I've asked for? I mean, I don't understand.
Well, first and foremost, we don't know what you asked for, because that would be breaking, we don't know what you asked for. But here's what I can tell you, as chairman, I've, you know, I keep the pulse every day and reach out to staff. Staff has done a wonderful job. Randy has done a wonderful job. Nature Coast, everybody's been working together to make this transition, and that's why we signed an emergency order. That gives the administrator the ability to do those things. Now, again, I'm not going to ask for anything because I think he's doing a great job, but that's between you and the administrator on what you're asking for. So with that...
Well, I do think that, I think they're doing a wonderful job too, but I think it's important as commissioners to know and be able to answer to what, you know, is happening. So if, Randy, you could send that to me like I had asked?
Sure. As I say, these have not been spent yet. These are just stuff that we're doing.
All right, Commissioner Kitchen?
Yeah. One, as I said, it hasn't been spent. I think the question was, how much has been spent? What we're talking about here is what's being budgeted, perhaps to be spent. We don't know if it's going to be spent today, tomorrow, the next day, or whatever. But again, you have all these numbers in front of us. It tells us, he's going to spend next year $13 million. I don't think we've ever sat down and scrutinized any department about, tell us how you spent the money in your budget until we get to the budget. What we're looking at right here is what he's telling us, what the transition costs are going to be, and what the budget is for next year. And I think those numbers are given to us, but there's a lot of unknown out there. That's why we're under an emergency, you know? We're relying on our staff to be able to make these kinds of decisions and then to come back and report to us once it's done. They shouldn't have to be out there coming back every time, you know, that a purchase is made or whatever. That's not our job. We approve the budget, and we leave it up to the staff to do it, and then we hold them accountable to whether they came in on the budget or not. So I think all those, the numbers that we need to see, and I think the most important number will be discussed at Tuesday's meeting, is about where the funding will come from. You know, I have every confidence that we're spending it well, or we wouldn't be issuing these kinds of declarations. But this is no different than what we do for a hurricane. We don't have the administrator come back and say, how much did you spend during the hurricane? How much did you spend, you know, during this event or whatever? So this will wash out as long as it's within the budget that we approve, so...
Correct. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah. Do we know how many people from Nature Coast have, maybe not EMTs or paramedics, how many have an interest in coming to the county, but we don't have a position for them? I mean, people essentially have lost their job over this.
I don't know. I know that we are not keeping the five people that are controlling traffic at Nature Coast. However, we have made contacts with the Sheriff's Department about them being potentially picked up in the 911 center.
Okay. That was going to be my follow-up, is just, you know, are we doing some outreach to see if we can help get them placed?
We're doing, we're doing the best we can. Obviously, our number-one objective is to...
Obviously, our number-one objective is to get all the paramedic and EMT slots filled so we can provide the service.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I just, you know, when we left the meeting, it was everybody, you know.
That's right.
What I recall was that everybody that's there that wants to come to the county will have a position initially, and, you know, then we'll see where things go from there. But it sounded, there was a comment that was made, I don't recall even who said it now, but there was a comment that was made that, well, not everybody's got a position. And so I just wondered what that number is. Is it two people? Is it eight? Is it, is it, you know, 20 people? I don't know.
Go ahead, Madam Attorney.
I'll be glad to answer that question, Commissioner Kennard. As I understand it, as we sit here today, that is approximately 10 people, including some administrative functions and control functions. In all candor, the only open positions currently posted are for paramedic and EMT. There are no other positions currently posted. Based on the organizational structure and communications that we've had, there is anticipation that will be some support positions that are posted, but as of right now, we do know that's control and certain admin or supervisory positions will not come, and that number is currently about 10 people.
Okay.
And if the control positions happen to be paramedics or EMTs, they can apply for those positions. I believe some of them meet those qualifications, some of them don't.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Aye. Motion passes 5-0. With that, our, we'll go to open to the public. Is there anybody else that wants to speak to the board? Welcome, Scott, come on up.
So just to clarify, the, the coolers on the ambulances, we haven't had coolers in months, and when we had them, it was a temporary thing. All the ambulances right now have refrigerators, so I don't know, refrigerators, freezers, they plug in. There is no ice packs, nothing like that. We used to use mini-meters ago, so just to clarify that.
Okay, all right. Is anybody else that wants to speak? Welcome.
Thank you. Mary Hedges, Chair of the Board of Directors of Nature Coast EMS, and I just, I didn't plan any remarks, but I just wanted to say you asked about the other people. And I know there's some really, people that are really having a difficult time, that some of our support people and I believe Fleet and Logistics that are not, you know, EMTs or paramedics, that keep looking on the site every day for positions for them, and they're, they're really concerned, because now we're getting down to a week, a week away, and they've got a lot of concerns with health insurance and.
Okay. And we, we got our public's word, so we'll address that. I do believe they're looking, but we'll, we'll.
The fleet position should have been posted this afternoon, but I would note that the fleet personnel at Nature Coast haven't been there for the last two or three days.
Okay. Randy Orton, you got any other things to add to that?
Yeah, we had to write the job descriptions for them, so that's what the delay was for that.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right.
To also address the other support positions, that we're hoping that they'll post within the next couple of days for logistics and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, with that, is there anybody else who wants to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the.
Chair.
Holly.
Hold on, hold on, we're opening the public right now. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close, open to the public. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, Chair, I just want to echo what seems to be the, at least some sentiment of the board, that we need to make sure that we reach out and help the folks that are not obviously getting positions as either an EMT or paramedic, because this is really pulling the rug out from underneath people's livelihood with very little notice. So we need to make sure that we do everything we can to find them employment that, that suits them.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, our next meeting will be September 28th at 1:00 p.m., and we are adjourned.